Evening. I'd like to welcome you and call to order the October 23rd Port Orchard City Council meeting, and I have Wee Blow Pla- Wee Blow Pack 4529 here this evening, and they are going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This fine young men came and grilled Councilmember Kuchardi and I here for the last 15 minutes, so I think we got all their questions answered.
And one on one.
Yeah, yes. And so we are to the approval of our agenda. Are there any additions or subtractions from this evening's agenda, modifications?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the agenda as published.
Second. Motion and a second to approve the agenda as published. Any discussion? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda has been approved. We are to our first citizen comment period, which is for anything on the agenda. Jerry back there, Jerry? Saying no comments, we'll move on to our consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to accept the consent agenda, to approve the consent agenda as published.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, which is just the payroll and checks. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Consent agenda is approved. We are to item five, this presentation by Mr. Randy Screws from the sewer treatment plant that we partner with.
Morning, or good afternoon, good morning. I usually do this meeting in the morning. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for having us today.
Maybe could you just put that microphone up just a little higher so we can catch you for record?
How's that?
Much better.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for having us today. My name is Randy Screws. I'm the general manager of West Sound Utility District, and accompanying me is Marty Grable- Gravill, excuse me, who is your new South Kitsap Water Reclamation Facility Plant Manager. Some of you already had a chance to meet him at the Sewer Advisory Committee Meeting. I thought I would bring Marty along tonight, so you could see all your faces and have a chance if anyone had any questions. I told them there would be no hard questions, but there may be some that required a lengthy dissertation to explain, but I'll leave that up to you if you want to move forward with that. This evening, I'm going to provide you some very brief information on the 2019 Squirf Budget, which you all should have currently. It is a program budget. It's in a very similar format that you have seen over the last six years, seven years, actually. We did move from a biennial budget to an annual budget. There's two reasons for that. One was to allow us to get Marty more involved in the budget, so he can take over the budgeting process for the South Kitsap Water Reclamation Facility, and also to help us as we approach ending our debt service with that facility. As you're aware, we have two debt service payments for that facility for the 2014 through 16 upgrade. One of those debts retires in 2022. The second debt retires in 2024. What we're looking at as we approach that debt horizon is to start reinvesting some of that money that we were normally going to pay debt payments back into the facility to address any future needs or concerns, whether they be regulatory or expansion that may be needed, or new technologies that may need to be implemented into the facility. I provided a table, which basically shows very simplistic approach of taking half million dollars a year once we start paying down that debt, beginning in 2023. And what we're proposing is we put it in a reserve fund within the capital fund, so that when we hit the years around 2035, we have sufficient money to do any kind of changes within the facility, and also if we do have to go out for any debting service, it will not be as major and much of an impact that it was before when we upgraded the facility. We're looking, I did provide to you a 20-year capital plan that was prepared. Within that capital plan, it has the funding, including that reserve fund, and it also has a separate capital plan that does not. And looking at that, as you look in the later years, in the mid 30s, it's going to provide us approximately $15 million to have to utilize for the facility at that point in time if it's needed. As we don't know what the growth is going to be over the next few years, we can all be optimistic what's happening currently, but we're also seeing what appears to be a slight downturn in that growth. But there's always uncertainty. One of the other components that was placed in here was a little increase in the salaries on that budget. Currently, the CPI is right about 3.1% for the area, and we included a 4.2% increase in those salaries. The main reason for that is we're doing a salary assessment right now to make sure that we remain competitive within the market where we're at, looking at other treatment facilities within a certain range. With that, we can- we plan on continuing the same programs. There's not going to be really any major changes that are within this budget, but we do look forward to a continued working relationship with the city and a prosperous and well-run facility in the future. Does anyone have any questions?
Questions for Randy?
Mr. Mayor, I do.
Yes, Mr. Clausen?
Randy, in your salary survey, do you do to make sure we stay up current, who do you use as comparables? Who do you look at?
So the comparables that are used are considering the employee benefits and the salaries, of course, but what we're looking at is we're looking at a commute time of 30 minutes. So we took a 30-minute radius from the facility and included all those municipalities of like kinds in that 30 minutes.
So within 30 minutes of our facility?
Within our facility.
Okay. Did that get us into Pierce County or not? Gig Harbor?
Slightly. It took us into Gig Harbor.
Okay.
It didn't take us all the way to Kingston, but it did take us into Mason County, and it didn't take us across the pond. The assumption is that we have an employee that may be wavering over a small increase in wage or benefits. If they have a 30-minute commute time, then that may become attractive. If they commute more than 30 minutes, then once that's factored in, that minor difference may not be so attractive. So we wanted to stay in the competitive range.
Any questions for Randy? Anything for Marty? I mean, he's got his good dress shoes on. I'm sure those aren't what he wears down at the sewer plant.
No. All right. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
You for coming. Okay, we are to item six, which is a public hearing on revenue sources and property tax current expense budget for the 2019-2020 and satisfying requirements of RCW 84.55.120. Finance Director Crocker.
Mayor, Council? The city legislative body is required to hold a revenue sources hearing on current expense budget revenue sources for the coming year's budget, including consideration of possible increases in the property tax revenues. The hearing is required before the legislative body votes on any property tax levy for the upcoming year. The deadline for the setting the levy for the property tax collection for 2019 is on or before November 30th, 2018. This hearing is part of the public process that leads to an ordinance being forwarded to the Kitsap County Assessor along with the levy certification in order to set the property tax levy for collection in 2019 tax year. The hearing will include a presentation of revenue sources and estimates for 2019-2020. The hearing relates to setting the 2019 levy for property tax collection in the year of 2019. Current expense budget means the budget which is primarily funded by taxes and charges and reflects the provisions of ongoing services. It does not mean the capital, enterprise, or special assessment budgets. Staff would recommend that we open the public hearing.
With that, I will open the public hearing. Any wishing to testify on this matter? Presentation is after I close the public hearing? No?
I think it's part of.
It is part of the public hearing, okay. Then I will leave it open. Will you give your presentation?
Okay, it's loading up, and let's see if it's gonna work. Great. All right. Tonight, we are here to hold a public hearing on revenue sources as required by RCW 84.55.120. In accordance with this RCW, we are required to hold this public hearing on revenue sources for the general fund in order to set the property tax levy for 2019. We are focusing on the current expense or general fund for tonight's discussion, as the purpose is to review the revenues of the current expense budget in order to adopt the property tax levy. Before you is the proposed biennial budget for 19 and 20, for the tax revenue only amount- for tax revenue amending to $20,500,000 for the two-year period. In this slide, we identified that there are three main taxing categories. Sales tax at $10.145 million, representing the largest tax source. Property tax at approximately $5.741 million, representing the second-largest tax source, and finally, other taxes making up the remainder of the tax sources. In this slide, we provide greater detail on the three main taxing categories budgeted. We identified how much we allocated for the fiscal year and the percentage of the overall tax source each represents. Again, sales tax is the largest taxing source, representing nearly 50% of our biennial budget. Property tax, again, is the second-largest taxing source, representing 30% of our biennial budget, and finally, other taxes makes up about 20%, with the majority of that being represented by electric tax, telephone tax, On this slide, we complete the biennial picture by adding in all sources of funding. These other revenue sources are identified in the smaller pie chart, with a total anticipated revenue of $3.432 million. The top three categories of these other revenue sources are intergovernmental at approximately $1,020,000, which are primarily fed and state grant revenue, motor vehicle fuel excise tax, with 4.6% of that going to the street capital, and then 0.42% to paths and trails. Charges for goods and services is approximately $883,000, primarily from planning and court fees. Lastly, we have license and permits at $810,700, again, primary business licenses and building permits. On the next slide, we take a look at the 1920 budget, excuse me, the 1718 budget compared to the 1920 budget. You'll notice that in total tax revenue, we are budgeting for approximately a 9% increase. Sales tax, do I have it on here? Yes, I do. Sales tax is approximately 10% larger than the 1718 budget. Property tax, approximately 6.4% larger, and other taxes round off with 8.5% larger than the other 1718 budget. Focusing on the other revenue categories, we just want to point out and highlight, the license and permit is budgeted to increase by about 20%. However, charges for services are budgeted to increase by about 20%. What we found is during this budgeting process, there were certain revenues that were offsetting revenues, meaning they were passed through. We would receive the revenue if we incurred the expense. What we found is that some of these revenues didn't come to fruition in 1718, neither did the expense, but when we looked at how much revenue we were coming in, we all of a sudden jumped to a conclusion that we weren't on target, because there were revenues we weren't receiving that we budgeted for as an offset. So we thought it made sense to clean up that process overall, that if these are truly offsetting revenues, meaning there's a zero impact overall to the city, there's no need to budget the revenues, because it kind of skews the picture as far as what we're truly expecting for revenue.
Because we don't incur the expense if we don't receive the revenue, correct?
Correct. We don't incur the expense if we don't receive the revenue. There were some other categories in the charges for services that also are down. Adult probation charges were down, and mini court fees are down, and a part of that is also that the court costs are down. So I don't know if they're dollar-for-dollar relationship, but as you have a new court, not sentencing people to jail, you don't have those fees and revenues that come into part of that. Now, again, you don't have those costs that are associated with those expenses either, so I'm not here to opine on whether it's positive or negative. I'm just representing that the actual costs and actual revenues weren't coming in as we originally budgeted, and we looked out, we thought we should decrease this to reflect what the actuals are coming in at. Fines and fortune- fines and forfeits are budgeted to decrease also by about 20%. Again, this relates to the courts. Traffic infraction penalties are down. Other criminal traffic is also down, and public defense revenues are all down. Overall, the budget is approximately 6.4% higher than the prior budget period.
Noah, on that fines and forfeitures too, does that have anything to do with our change to a cash accounting? Because historically, we recognized those receivables and budgeted to the receivables, which may or may not have been collectible, and now we've changed to cash accounting. Is that a piece of that equation?
I wouldn't think so. I mean, maybe a little bit, and we'd have to look into it. Again, we're going for that, we'll go through a transition year, where you'll have some of this stuff touching revenue and expenses differently. I think it more is attributed to what's going on with the court and how the court is managing that program now. Again, I would say that if you're not issuing as many tickets, you're also not pulling people over, and not going through that whole court process and incurring the expenses of defending them as well. So the public defender cost, while we're not receiving the revenue, we're also not incurring the cost of having public defense. So there is an offset to that revenue The next table provides historic property tax data. Now, this is important for tonight's discussion, because later on, you'll have the property tax hearing for 2019. We are proposing a property tax levy of $2.851 million. It's important to remember that Washington State has one of the most complex property tax methodologies in the nation. Washington State has a budget-based system of property taxation. Now, this means that the city establishes the amount of property tax revenue needed to fund the budget, and then the levy is then calculated by the county as an output of the levy amount. We are constrained by several factors when we calculate our levy. We're constrained by both dollar amounts and then levy rates. So the city will establish the levy amount, and the county will calculate the levy rate required to raise that amount of revenue using our assessed value and the other levies established by the districts. The city will certify to the county by November 30th, and for 2019, we have identified again a total of $2.51 million levy needed. Both the levy amount and the levy rate are subject to change depending on the outcomes of the fire district's levy, library district's levy, and the state utilities that go into Again, on the next slide shows actual property tax collections over time. You can see that we have had some growth in property tax revenue collections. However, property tax collections in 2018 did not grow as significantly as in prior years. And again, we talked about this last year when the library initiative was coming forward. We had set our levy at $2.8 million. If you recall, I'd made this comment that if the library passes, we can expect to receive about $2.72 million in revenue because of the result of the library passing. And in fact, that's what we realized. So I was very happy to see my notes from last year that I was spot-on on actual forecasting what we receive, and so I feel pretty good about that.
So Noah, it wasn't just the, it wasn't just the library, it was also the fire district-
And the fire district, yeah.
And fire district.
Yep, the fire district and the library, both. Yep. This year, we don't expect that, because there's nothing on the ballot, there's no lifts going on, so we do expect to collect our full $2.848.5 million. Yeah, okay. Sorry, my slides were getting messed up on my screen here. The table provide- this table provides historic property tax data and the proposed 2019 property tax levy to be adopted later this evening. Again, for 2019, we are proposing a property tax levy of $2.851 million. Did I just go through this whole slide?
No.
No?
No? Okay. Looks like my notes are almost the exact same, so I don't want to repeat myself. Did I skip a slide? No, that's that one. That's that one. Oh, here we are. Okay, I'm sorry.
All right.
All right. Here we go. This slide for 18 and 19 breaks down the total levy amount. Again, you can see the $2.72 million that we collected in 2018. Again, if you look at what we actually levy, we levy the $2.8 million, but we collected the $2.722. When we add in the new construction for our collections, there were zero annexations, and we're putting in $10,000 for state utilities as an estimate. Again, we don't know what those are until the end of the year, so we put that in to capture that value if it comes true. This brings the total levy amount to $2.851983. In 2018, I already made that comment. Again, this year, there are no lifts on the ballot, so again, we fully expect to collect the full levy amount. Okay, now we'll switch gears from the property tax and talk about sales tax. Now, in the past, we've had some different comments on here, but I want to make sure that this is reiterated, that more important than the property tax is our sales tax, because it accounts for 50% of our biennial budget, which is a large amount. Year-to-date, revenue is on track when we look at the sales tax through three quarters of 2018. We're about 81%, so we're doing better than we expected through three quarters, so that's very encouraging. We have experienced growth, and it continues to be solid, solid growth going back to 2015. Now, on this slide, again, we're comparing actuals, so we're looking at the first three quarters of 2017, and comparing that to 18. We show actual growth at about 8.5%. When we looked at 2016 to 2017, the growth rate was closer to 4%, so we're, again, we're still realizing strong growth for the city. It's also important to mention that the sales tax revenue is delayed, and so it does not show up in the month of the sales activity. There's always about a two-month delay before we actually receive the sales tax revenue from the sales activity. For the 2019-2020 biennial budget, we are estimating a total growth of about 4%. Many of the economic commentary that is available right now is that there is a prediction of a slowdown anticipated, with a high probability of a recession to occur in 2020. So on the sales tax revenue forecasting side, we are not being ultra-aggressive. We are trying to be conservative. We are budgeting for upside potential while limiting our downside This graph displays the sales tax history. Again, it helps to show it differently, that the bar chart shows that solid sales tax growth is occurring, and reflects the variance of when we receive sales tax revenue. This last chart is, again, another line graph representing all revenues. It is quite evident and noticeable that the property tax has a cash flow impact with, by the spikes, both occurring in April, October. And in reviewing the lines, we see that the purple line, which is our 18 revenues, again, is higher than our 2017 revenues, so it's solid, but the spread between them is tight, so it's, there's not a wide margin of growth there, but it is positive, and that's a good thing. And this concludes my remarks on all the revenues for the current expense funds.
All right. Questions from the council?
Just a request. Can you print your PowerPoint and put it in our mailboxes?
Yep, absolutely.
Look to us.
Email it to you? Either or.
Who wants printed versions?
Oh.
Okay, Sean and, John and Sean email.
Just email it.
Anybody else printed version?
Okay, perfect.
Anyone in the public wishing to testify on this matter? Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing. We are to our business items of this evening. First is item 7A, adoption of an ordinance establishing a standardized utility fund structure and creating a new enterprise funds. Mr. Crocker, you're back.
And I'm back. Thank you. I'm very excited to bring this forward. We've been talking about this for several months, and so I'm very thankful for the support and excited to have the separation of our utilities and bring continued work towards transparency. So as a reminder, at the May 29th Finance Committee meeting, the committee requested that the Finance Department investigate separating the water sewer fund into individual separate enterprise funds. The separation would lead to overall standardization of all utility funds, which with each having its own operating stabilization, capital, and debt service funds. At the July 24th Finance Committee meeting, the Finance Director provided the committee with information regarding a uniform structure for all enterprise funds for consistency and transparency. The Finance Department took the direction from Finance Committee and provided a breakout of the fund structure and some analysis of the impact. The Finance Committee and Director discussed at several council meetings as a committee report to the full council to gauge support for the separation. Furthermore, the team reported the impact of the benefits and creating greater transparency. At our most recent October 16th Council Work Study Meeting, the Finance Director provided the city council with the Finance Committee's formal recommendations and a draft of the proposed utility fund structure for review and comments. Overall, separating the funds shall create greater transparency and aid the city in its project and funding decisions. The city has determined that it is in the best interest of the city to establish a standardized enterprise fund structure for all enterprises of the city. This creates overall standardization in all utility funds, with each having its own operating stabilization, capital, and debt service funds. Staff would recommend approving the ordinance as provided to establish a standardized operating enterprise fund structure and create new enterprise funds for the city.
Councilmember Clausen?
Mr. Mayor, this, I think, is, personally, I think this is a great move from a transparency standpoint. It separates our utilities, our water, our wastewater, and our stormwater separately, so people can see them independent of each other, and it certainly helps, especially when you break them into these different categories, so you can compare the debt service of one utility versus the debt service of another utility, and truly see where those expenses are going. So with that, I would move to adopt an ordinance to establish a standardized enterprise fund structure and create new enterprise funds for the city.
Second.
Motion and a second by Councilmember Lucarella. Other comments or questions about this?
I would just like to concur with what John said. I think it's a great move, and it's a logical move. I think we want to consider how we manage our funds.
I'd just like to acknowledge the work that Noah did on this. He's done exceptional work on this process and should be given the credit due.
Agreed.
So other questions or comments? With that, you'll be voting on the adoption of an ordinance establishing a standardized utility fund structure and create, and create new enterprise funds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then the motion carries. We are to item 7B, adoption of an ordinance amending the 2017-2018 biennial budget. Mr. Crocker?
Great, thank you, Mayor. Again, this is another ordinance I'm bringing forward that we've talked about over the last couple of months. We've made great progress in our equipment rental revolving fund, and this is, again, just another step forward to completing that overall program management. On August 21st, 2018, the city council established by ordinance number 2318 an equipment rental and revolving fund, and adopted policies by resolution. The ERR fund will be used to support the operation, maintenance, and replacement of the city's fleet of vehicles. As part of the creation and the funding plan of the equipment rental revolving fund, the city will transfer monies from the current equipment reserve funds identified below, which are funds Fund 303, the cumulative reserve for equipment replacement, Fund 402, the water sewer equipment replacement, Fund 422, storm drainage equipment replacement. This budget amendment will transfer the replacement reserves to Fund 500, which is our newly created ERR fund, where they will be used for future replacement purchases. Additionally, this budget amendment will adjust the current expenditure authority previously authorized at $25,000 for Fund 303 to $27,104 to reflect the actual cost of a vehicle purchased during the biennial period. Staff recommends approving the ordinance as provided.
Okay. Councilmember Deener?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance amending the 2017-18 biennial budget. biennial budget and increasing expenditure authority from Funds Three-O-Three Cumulative Reserve Equipment Replacement, Four-O-Two Water Sewer Equipment Replacement, and Four-Twenty-Two Storm Drainage Equipment Replacement as proposed in the ordinance.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Clausen. Any discussion? Questions? Yes, Councilmember Ashby?
Well, I have a question, but it's back to the other action that we just took. When are we going to separate those funds into the various categories?
For the enterprise funds? So the, the plan is, you just took action and created the funds, so we will work towards actually creating those funds in our software system, so they are there and available, but they will not become active until the beginning of twenty nineteen, January first, twenty nineteen, is when those funds will become available.
That was my question. That, with the new biennium, is when we will fund this?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
And then with that is this action also, is that we're, we're authorizing, we're creating these funds and then funding it primarily through the budget. This is transferring balances that we have for equipment replacement existing. Other questions? There, I saw a hand over here. Mr. Clausen?
Yeah, I was gonna make a comment on this action, and, and I was trying to think the best way to explain it, and I was gonna start with standardizing, but I don't know that it's really standardizing. It, it's more of providing a holistic approach to equipment purchasing than we're kind of looking at all departments together as opposed to, you know, the police department and their car needs, and Public Works and their dump truck needs, and, you know, all of that. We're kind of looking at the vehicles for the city and not by department, so I'm not quite sure how to explain it.
Yeah, no, I think you're doing a good job, Councilmember, and I think the word you're looking for is centralizing.
Yes.
Rather than a piecemeal system for acquiring our assets and all our different funds and all our different departments, we are centralizing the purchasing component of that to one fund, to one program, which makes that a lot easier to manage, track, follow, and actually make future decisions on.
Well, the future decisions, I think, is an important piece of it, because it certainly will help in projecting the city's needs, so we can plan for it better than, again, looking at it at separate silos, so I think it's a great move. Thank you.
Councilmember Kachari?
Just one more comment on that. Even beyond that is to be able to project for, you know, reserve funds to replace them into the future, whereas right now, we have vehicles well beyond their, their useful life, and for us to be able to realize that they do have useful lives and to plan appropriately.
And budget, and save for that future purchase versus trying to scramble every budget cycle to buy a few cars.
We also developed standards for calculating that useful life.
Appreciation, yeah.
It was mileage and, I can't remember.
Age, there's another one.
Yeah, there were several things.
Other comments or questions on this? Okay, you'll be voting on adoption of an ordinance amending the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen biennial budget related primarily to the equipment rental and revolving fund. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are to our next business item, which is seven C, adoption of ordinance setting the amount of property tax to be levied for the twenty nineteen, for year twenty nineteen pursuant to RCW eighty-four point five five point one twenty. Finance Director Crocker?
Great, thank you, Mayor. So this evening, we held a public hearing on revenue sources for the current expense budget. The hearing included presentation and discussion on the property taxes considered for collection in twenty nineteen. Again, in the staff report, we have a comparison of the New Year's levy amount. State law by RCW eighty-four fifty-two oh four three establishes a maximum levy rate for various types of taxing districts. Total city of Port Orchard twenty nineteen property tax amount is estimated to be two million eight hundred fifty-one thousand nine eighty-three based upon an estimated maximum levy rate of one dollar and fifty-four eleven cents per thousand of a current total assessed value of one billion eight hundred thirty-three thousand, eight hundred thirty-three million forty-seven thousand twenty-three dollars. I think I got that right. The twenty nineteen amount is estimated until the final levy calculation is completed by the Kitsap County Assessor. Recommendations for the Finance Committee to recommend approval of this ordinance.
Councilmember Rosa Pepe?
I move to adopt an ordinance setting the twenty nineteen property tax levy and the amount of property taxes to be raised for the budget year of twenty nineteen.
Second.
By Councilmember Deener. Discussion of this? More questions for Mr. Crocker? You'll be voting on the adoption of an ordinance setting the amount of property taxes, taxes to be levied for the year twenty nineteen. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the levy rate's been set. So we are item, to item D, which is the legislative agenda, and I'll read the staff report. So on October sixteenth, twenty eighteen, Trevor Justin and Brianna Murray with Gordon Thomas Honeywell Government Affairs presented the city's twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-one legislative priorities to include the McCormick Sewage Lift Station, state investment in state routes within our city, economic development tools, condominium liability, and the foster pilot program. The mayor recommends adoption of a resolution adopting the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-one legislative agenda. Councilmember Lucarelli?
I move to adopt a resolution thereby approving the twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-one legislative agenda.
Second. Second by Councilmember Kachari. This is just at our last work study, so I think it's fresh in our minds, but, so any questions of me or staff? With that, we'll be voting on the approval of our legislative agenda. All in favor, say aye? Any opposed? Hearing none, the legislative agenda's been set. We are to our last business item, which is seven E, approval of the October ninth council meeting minutes. Mr. Clausen?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the minutes from the October ninth, twenty eighteen council meeting.
A second.
Councilmember Lucarelli, second at that. Discussion or corrections of those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? I have one abstention from Councilmember Kachari. We are to committee reports. Mr. Clausen, Finance Committee's been busy. Do you have anything to report?
We pretty much covered it at the last work study, so it's nothing more than to schedule the next meeting, so I think we, not sure if we have a schedule yet, but we have to get that scheduled.
No, the, your, most of your committee and a couple council members met with the directors in the budget process on Friday, and we've got a meeting with Councilmember Rosa Pepe and Councilmember Lucarelli tomorrow afternoon, and after that, everyone will have had the same, same presentation, so.
Great.
He actually made it Friday.
Okay.
So he.
Which was very well done, by the way. I wanted to compliment city staff on that. It was very well done. Appreciate it.
So we're to economic development tourism?
Yes, we are going to have a meeting on Wednesday, November seventh, at nine thirty. I believe you requested, we, that is rather than meeting on Veterans Day. We've moved that meeting to Wednesday, November seventh.
And at, at that same time, nine thirty?
Nine thirty.
Yeah, and we should, we're seeking proposals on that video. We've got one.
Right, you were, yeah, we're having the meeting because you had specific needs for us to get together.
Yep, and primarily, that's the need, is to evaluate those proposals. Okay, Utility Committee?
I don't believe we have anything scheduled right at the moment. If we do have a meeting, it will be on November nineteenth, but we'll wait to hear from the director on that one.
Okay, and Mark isn't here this evening, so. Sewer Advisory, we just got a presentation tonight.
We just did, so the next meeting is here at City Hall, January sixteenth.
And I see land use. I don't believe you've met, November fifth is your next meeting? Is that correct?
We are, we may be changing that date. I think that date falls on a holiday, right?
No, the following week is a holiday.
Okay, so November fifth, at nine thirty at DCD.
Nine thirty at the DCD offices for land use. Okay, Lodging Tax Advisory?
We met last night, took a lot of in, input from the council, had a very robust, as opposed to spirited, discussion about what tact we wanted to take based on the council input. We're gonna maul that around, and we're meeting November fifth, and we'll come back with a proposal. One of the things that wanted to be discussed is looking for clarity from the council regarding whether we look at it as a surplus, whether we look at it as a reserve fund, what are those funds to be used for, and how could they be impacted with the future. They understood the economic climate and outlook, words that Noah's echoed several times, so it was a very good discussion, actually, and I think that you'll be pleased with what you'll see coming out from the November fifth meeting. So thank you all again for the comments from the previous week.
And I think Noah, I think, would probably be next year, but I think our goal is, is to bring some, some policies forward as it relates to those, what are appropriate reserves, and let the council weigh in on that and establish formal policies so that it's not, well, we, well, we remembered this, or we did it this way in the past, that there really is a process for that, which, right now, is lacking. Festival of Chimes and Lights?
Yes, we're moving along with our plans. Our next meeting is November nineteenth at three thirty here in City Hall, but we also have our posters, our brochures just arrived, hot off the press. We'll get those distributed this week starting, and we're happy to announce that we have twenty-nine participants in the tree decorating contest so far, which is huge. So thank you, everyone who's, who's participating, and I think that's gonna be beautiful. So we're on schedule.
Okay. Outside agencies, the only exciting thing I have to report is, if you missed it, the MV Finest is the vessel for the Kingston service, and it came home from Nichols Brothers and made a, an appearance out in the bay in front of Port Orchard last week, and it's waiting for a dock to tie up to in Kingston. There's just pilings there right now. It'd be difficult to get anybody on the boat, so I think we're close, and I, I think the goal is before the holidays to have service up and running for that up in Kingston, so more to come on that.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add to that, I'd extend a personal invitation to the council on November nineteenth, which is a Monday, Monday morning. We're going to have a, kind of a ribbon cutting, if you will, for the start of the Kingston service, and we've confirmed that the, the governor will be here to, be there to help us. He was there to help us celebrate the start of Birmerton, and he's planning to be there to help us start Kingston, so in the morning on the nineteenth, if you're available, it'll be in Kingston.
Other than the morning, do you know ten, nine, eleven?
We're, we're zeroing in on that time right now based on the governor's calendar, and I think it's gonna be around the ten AM timeframe, so.
If maybe Jill could just send an email when you confirm that time.
Oh, you'll all get an invitation.
We'll get an invitation, perfect.
Yep.
Looking forward to it. Okay, we are done with committee reports. Report of the mayor. I mentioned it previously. I'm still looking for a, an appointment to, for the county's grant recommendation committee, and that is the, each mayor and the county commissioner's appoint to the human services, these are for human services grants, and the Maureen Wheeler has served in that capacity for the city, and her, her job is just not gonna make her be available going forward. I have Chris Danesbury surveying on the Capitol Awards Committee for that, so I'm still looking for somebody. If you have someone in mind or somebody watching the meeting, get ahold of me. I'd love to appoint you. And so the next big item is bids are out. There's, for two items related to well thirteen. We're actually gonna drill a well, so our goal is to have those contracts before you on the December eleventh council meeting. The first contract will be related to site clearing, security fencing in a storm pond, and the second item is actually the actual well drilling. Thomas's quote to me was, this is one small step for mankind and one large leap for the city of Port Orchard. Mark gave me an update on Tremont. They're gonna continue this, this week significant traffic delays on the easterly half of the project as they finish up those, those water lines, and then the service lines that go with them. Next, weather permitting, we should be done with that activity, which gets us out of the ground, other than the large storm outfall at the west end of the project, which will be done in the spring. So with the completion of that activity, the two traffic lanes will be shifted, I believe, to the south. Will they, that street isn't in very good condition anymore. It's got a few cuts in it, and they're gonna rubble like they did down below on the other half and turn it into basically a base for the, for the first lift of asphalt, so that should happen after the first month, weather permitting, can't have too much rain, and then once that north side is paved, they'll shift everybody to that side and then do the other side, but they've got, it involves driveways and curbing, and, and so it'll be a couple of weeks worth of work, but we're getting closer to having a base course. We did ask the question, once we get that base course down and that roundabout built, whether we're gonna reopen the road, and the contractor isn't going to, and they can work much, the detour is working. It doesn't work well when there's one lane and flaggers, but they can, they can work much more efficiently and faster with, with that section of road closed, and the landscapers are out there starting irrigation, so things are moving good, and we're, we're gonna get to a point here in the next, you know, month or two where the project should get shut down for a period of time because of just, you know, heavy rains, they just can't get anything accomplished, or at least efficiently, so. I have social media stats on this. We've got our, our Facebook followers grew by almost a couple hundred this last year. I got a list of the Always Stop at Berry Lake. We posted it once. We had, we reached eighteen hundred and forty-two people. Fathoms fireworks events related to lot closures, we posted that once. Eighteen hundred and thirty-three. Festival of Chimes and Lights, tree decorating, we chaired that three times and reached nineteen hundred forty-eight people. We recently hired a new Public Works employee, posted that once. We reached twenty-one hundred eighty-seven people, and we hired a young man by the name of Thomas Lovely. He started this week, and Tremont paving, when that was happening, we posted it twice, reached twenty-four hundred people. Plastic Bag Survey, we posted that twice. Twenty-seven hundred people we reached. Tremont, when the strike happened and we suspended the project, two postings, we reached thirty-five hundred people. The Foot Ferry Service this past summer, we posted that nine times, reached almost four thousand people, and the code updates that we recently did, we posted it twice, reached fifty-seven hundred people. And the, when we closed Bay Street, we posted that, you know, for the emergency repairs for that stormwater outfall, posted that three times, reached eleven thousand people. So we are getting the message out sometimes. We, at the, after our second citizen comment period, we will be going into a collective, collective bargaining session, but we will be adjourning the meeting and taking no action afterwards, so don't, don't run out the door. With that, we are to our second citizen comment period. Does anybody?
What your department is?
Oh, I'm sorry, department heads. I skipped you guys. Mr. Crocker, you talked a lot tonight. Do you have anything else to share?
Any more presentations and powerpoints I'd like to show? No, I have nothing else for there tonight. Thank you.
Sharon, do you have anything?
Nothing for me tonight.
Okay, yeah. I can't believe Noah made you come here.
As you mentioned, that we did hire a permit clerk for, a public works permit clerk, so she will start on November thirteenth, and then tomorrow, there will be a police oral board, and we have five applicants. oral board, and we have five applicants that will be interviewed, and I believe, and then we have our new civil engineer starting.
Thirty.
On the, next Monday. It'll be next Monday, so that's it.
Okay. Brandon?
I have nothing.
Okay. Now I'll take citizen comments. Anybody wish, address the council? Step forward and identify yourself for the record.
Hey, my name's Scott Curvan. Island Slaughter County Brewing Company, thirteen oh seven Bay Street. I'm here to request the city council's support in keeping parking open and available along Etta Turner Park. Park as of earlier this summer is posted as closed dusk to dawn. There's a change either proposed or already underway to remove all parking twenty-four hours a day with only two available spots posted as two-hour parking. As the city's closest business to the park, we have a front row seat to everything that goes on, and we were unaware until a week ago that this is being planned. The reasoning, as explained to me by the mayor, is twofold. To give the local police better enforcement options in dealing with drug and the homelessness issues, and to keep shipyard workers from using these spots during the day. I appreciate that something being, is being proposed. My concern is that the effort is misguided and that the negative impacts outweigh any desirous but wishful benefits. I'm talking about the negative impacts to the community, our local businesses, and most drastically to my business, while having little or no impact on the targets of the change. Currently, the nightly park closure, along with some landscaping, has resolved the problems with overnight campers and loitering. The vast majority of our homeless residents don't drive, and the few that do already park about half the time in the West Bay Center lot, which abuts Etta Turner parking area, which won't be affected by this, this change. All this change will do is push these folks into the parking in a nearby private business lots and take parking options from legitimate public users. The no parking signs aren't gonna keep the large group of homeless residents, the mentally ill, the addicts, the drug dealers, from spending their time in the park because they don't drive. Regarding the shipyard workers, the concern is that when the park, the walkway is finished, we'll have workers taking up parking. The completion of the walkway isn't gonna affect the distance or walkability to either foot ferry from where we're at. We haven't had a problem in the past, and if such thing does become a problem, I'd say a four-hour parking limit in the entire park would be a much preferred solution. In speaking with local police and the community affairs officers, the recommended solutions, which we've been supportive, were firstly do some landscaping to increase visibility and reduce the amount of brush used as cover for illegal activities, and second, to possibly remove the benefits on the, the benches on the south end of the park. The landscaping solution was implemented on the north end, and it worked great. The results were immediate. Unfortunately, the park is still overgrown on the south end, and the people of concern all hang out down there instead now, which at least moves them away from direct conflict with the businesses in West Bay Center and the pedestrian traffic that uses the bridge, the walking park, and the pergola area. The landscaping recommendation for your info is actually to have bushes no taller than about two and a half foot tall and trees limit up to about seven foot, and to keep the area lit from dusk to dawn. Currently, those bushes are about five foot tall, and the, the trees come down in some points to about four foot, so provides complete cover for any of the activities going on over there, which includes the loitering, drug use, drinking, and public urination and defecation. I've got about a minute left, if I may.
Quickly.
Okay, it's only a minute. The people currently using the north parking area, and those that would most impact by the change are legitimate, legal, public users of a public property. Citizens utilizing the new walking trail, Pokemon Go players, people visiting the farmer's market, people coming to watch the Thursday Night Music and the Park Series, people looking to spend more than two hours downtown businesses during the day, and people visiting from outlying areas for events like our parades, fireworks, car shows, et cetera. We need these people to feel welcome here, not to be scared off by another message that makes them feel unwelcome in downtown Port Orchard. I encourage the city to continue to work to deal with the problematic individuals in our neighborhood, and landscaping and increased visibility has been proven effective here and in other communities that have faced similar problems. Regarding the negative impacts specific to my business, we have limited parking available, and occasionally, we use that north end of Etta Turner as overflow parking. We can go overflow into the larger West Bay Center area, which is further away for us, but the transition to that area is not well lit, the visibility isn't great, and it will put our customers and staff into proximity and conflict with that south end where the homeless people are currently hanging out. This change will put extra pressure on our limited parking. Those legitimate users I mentioned earlier seeking to park in the north end of the park will naturally end up in our parking spots.
Scott, you need to wrap it up. We've extended your time.
All right. I've got, all right, it's like three sentences.
We appreciate your comments.
We're gonna have, well, we're gonna have to post on this. Negative signage is demonstrably bad for business. We don't want to have to put up negative signage. I'm asking for your help and your support on this.
Thank you for your comments, Scott.
I'd like to work towards a decent solution on it, all right? Thank you.
That, others wishing to comment? All right, with that, no. All right. The meeting is adjourned, and the council will be heading into a separate meeting pursuant to R C W forty-two thirty point one four oh dash four for collective bargaining session.